You're watching CHCO TV's gavel-to-gavel coverage of the January 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. Today's meeting begins with a community safety update. Sergeants Jeff Peters and Scott McKenzie of the New Brunswick RCMP will be in attendance for any questions or comments from committee. Committee will provide an update on the world's oldest basketball court. Committee will also discuss drafts of the crosswalk policy, public presentation policy, and tourism accommodation levy bylaw. Finally, Councillor Cornish will present to committee on concerns about potential pollution of the St. Croix waterway. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garcelin Civic Centre in St. Stephen.
District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting on Wednesday, January 15th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Call to order. Everyone is accounted for. Before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pasquahdi Peoples. Okay, I'll take a mover and second there that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of January 15th be 2025 be approved. Councillor Harding?
I'll second.
Councillor Eastman, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none? All right. I'll take a mover and second there for the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting proposed resolution that the minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting be held on December 4th, 2024. That was held on December 20, December 4th, 2024, be approved as presented.
Second.
Councillor Greenlaw, Councillor Wright, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Special Committee of the Whole Meeting, mover and second there that the minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting held December 11th, 2024 be approved as presented. Deputy Mayor Wheaton, Councillor Cornish, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I'll take another mover and second there that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on November 14th, 2024 be approved as presented. Councillor Wright?
Second.
Councillor Eastman, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, new business. We have the community safety update, and with us tonight we got Staff Sergeant Jeff Peters and Corporal Lambert, and one other I don't know, so.
Constable McDougal.
Constable McDougal?
Yeah.
Welcome. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Councillors, thank you very much for inviting us and giving us some time here this evening. I appreciate it. I see some familiar faces around here I haven't seen in a while, so it's nice to be back. So we'll do some brief introductions here, I guess. So myself, for those who don't know, I was born and raised in St. Stephen, moved away. I've done almost 20 years of policing elsewhere, and I've moved back in 2023. So I'm the district advisory NCO for RC-10, basically which means I oversee police operations for all of the RSC, and I report to the OIC of Operations, who's in Oremokto. So a little bit of good news, prior to January the 6th, I was doing this job for both RC-11 and RC-10, so I was kind of stretched all over the half the province. So due to some staffing changes and whatnot, they created a new position basically just for RC-11, and I'm solely responsible for RC-10 now, so I'm quite happy about that. So yeah, I worked six years in Nova Scotia, eight years in the Yukon, and three years in the Northwest Territories. And again, quite happy to be home here, living here, and plan to retire here, so some continuity. So before I get into anything else, I'll introduce my cohorts, gentlemen here to my right, I guess needs no introduction.
If anybody here doesn't know me, I won't. So my name's Corporal Lambert. I have 16 years of service, and the past 10 years, six in Nova Scotia, and then the past 10 years in July, I've been here in St. Stephen. So it's been a while, and my children, everybody here, I live actually happily up in St. David's Ridge. It's good to see on the sign. And yeah, so I actually work directly for Jeff as his support NCO, and so, yeah.
And Sergeant McKenzie couldn't be here this evening, he's off sick, but Peter does quite a bit of acting in Scott's absence, so he can easily move into that role when needed. And some good news in terms of our staffing, we're getting a number of recruits starting, so we've got Constable McDougal. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hello, everyone. I'm the new guy. I graduated Depot four months ago. It's my first posting. So my name is Constable McDougal. Thank you. I'm originally from St. John, grew up there my whole life, so only an hour and a half away from home, so feel to be here. So yeah, pretty much. Thank you.
Is your home now?
Yeah, pretty much. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Connor. And we've also have another cadet that started in McAdam, and we'll be introducing him to the council there next week. And we've got two other, sorry, three other cadets, one starting next, this week?
On 27th.
Yeah, or we got one starting before, then we get two starting towards the end of the month, so we've got three. So it's good news for our resourcing levels. So the purpose of our coming tonight, we understand from the association of, I always mix up the acronym, the municipalities of New Brunswick Meeting. We got some feedback through our, from our Crops Office in Fredericton that the individual councils would like to see us more, and we fully understand and appreciate that. And we, however, as you can appreciate the logistics of seeing, you know, in RC-10, what do we have, six or seven, including Graham and Anne, it's not feasible to do every month. So we're going to try to do this a couple times a year, and it's basically just to come in and, you know, take away any major issues or concerns that you have, and, you know, come back with an answer when we, when we're able to. So just to address a few issues, and then I'm more than happy to, if anybody has any questions. A few projects that we're working on and that Peter's been spending a lot of time on is we understand that ATVs are a growing concern, and they are for us as well. We have a fair number of calls, and we also sadly, in this province, I don't remember the exact number, but the number of fatalities that we had on the roads, and a good percent of those were off-road on ATVs or snowmobiles. Last year, it was like, I think, a new record was set sadly. So we're, our goal with the enforcement is safety. Excuse me, we've taken a different approach, so as, you know, it's common knowledge, we don't chase these vehicles, we don't chase most vehicles for safety reasons. So is the, you know, the offense that they're committing by racing up the street worth somebody getting severely injured by chasing them? So that's why we don't chase them. A lot of people wonder why. So we've taken another approach to it, and we've had some pretty good success so far. I'm not going to play all of our hand here, but basically the message I'd like to get out is that we're looking for names of people. So people know who these people are, and we're kind of dealing with it that way. So our goal is initially, and a lot of these are young people, and, you know, a lot of our stuff has been out in front of the high school, in front of the Irby. We're not looking to, you know, we hear comments, we're always just looking to ruin these kids having fun. No, not at all. We're not looking, we understand it's a way of life, and a lot of people do this. I do it, Peter does it. But we want people to do it in a safe manner and not up King Street on one wheel. So our goal is education, especially with the young people, to make them understand that these things aren't meant to be driven on the road, and they're not legal to be driven on the road. So we want it, we're trying to address it with education, but obviously after the fact, you know, there's a enforcement component as well. So just as an example, we dealt with, a few months ago, we dealt with a young person at Fundy High School, and as we were speaking with him, he just decided to gun it and take off up the road. So the minute you flee from a police officer, you've now committed a criminal offense. So we didn't charge that individual after we caught up with him, he was a young fellow, and we, you know, we dealt with it through alternative diversion type situation, which is what we want. Like I say, it's all about education and road safety. So like I say, the message is we want people to keep calling, but if people have information that they know little Johnny next door is going out every day at 3:00 on to Highway 3 and barreling down the road, let us know. And we're, you know, we have a, we have a plan in place. So again, it's, it's all about road safety. Part of our policing priorities is community engagement and police presence, so we're keenly aware of that. So we're coming up to our new priority setting with the RSC probably in March or April for the, for the next fiscal year. And also crime prevention was one of those. So again, those are things that we're reporting on. So did you folks get the quarter two report from the RSC? You did? Okay.
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I do apologize, I know they were horribly late, and that was an issue with the people producing the reports. So as you see, the reports have changed significantly, and that's as a result of feedback from, from you folks and councils across the province. So the goal of these is to try to address some of the common, you know, the common questions that people have. And for example, I frequently hear, you know, complaints about call times and people when they're calling to our dispatch center about how long they're waiting on hold. So they keenly track those numbers in terms of when people call, when the call's answered, how many are in the queue, that sort of thing. So it's being included as part of the quarterly reporting. And just along that lines, if you have people, you know, we frequently hear people will say, well, I was on hold for 45 minutes, then I hung up. Well, we've actually, a lot of those, we've traced them back and say, well, actually you weren't on hold for 45 minutes, and here's the actual number. So we can track that stuff quite, quite easily. I'm not going to go through the report line by line, but if, if anyone has any questions or concerns, I do know that every council meeting I go to, people are asking, well, can you do this? Can you do a separate report? And unfortunately, these are the structure of the report that we have to do for the whole province. And it's basically, you know, it's, we don't have the mechanism to like customize reports for, you know, individual councils and whatnot. So these are what they're trying to accommodate everyone in the province. And again, they're kind of a work in progress. They may change it again next year, add things to it, take things away, but it's based on people's feedback. Yeah, and again, I'm open to questions, or if you have any issues or concerns that you'd like us to take away and come back, or.
Let's make a comment about maybe share some things you don't need to call. You can use the online version for it. Maybe you can kind of.
Yes, good, very good point, your worship. Thank you. We do have a, yeah, so one of the common themes that we're pushing, and I know, I know the mayor and other people are probably sick of hearing it, but we feel that we're not getting enough people calling about certain things. And very small things, minor things that you don't need the police to attend, but might be good information. We have an online crime reporting tool, and it's accessed via the RCMP website, and you can report things there, and it'll give you a file number. So these would be things like somebody backed into your car in the parking lot, you know, your lawnmower was stolen from your cottage a week ago, you know, I saw a suspicious vehicle in my driveway on my security camera, that sort of thing. So yeah, that's, it's a good tool, and it captures those types of things.
Can you do it for the, like you were talking about, the off-road vehicles? Can you use that tool for that, or do you need a statement?
No, and good point. When we're talking about people, I don't, we don't expect people to stand up and point at their neighbor and say, this is, I'll give a statement, I'll go to court. That's not what we're looking for. We are just looking for that information because chances are we get an idea who these people are anyway, we just need a confirmation. But yes, that's something people can report online that, and again, I want people to take away that it's for safety. So if you're seeing this kid going up and down the road all the time, it's not about taking his or her bike away, it's about making sure they don't end up seriously injured or dead, and that's basically what we're looking to accomplish.
And I can speak to that too, if you want. I can add a little bit is that my, I started this because we were getting so many complaints, and Jeff gave you some direction as well, is we need to get on it. And this is a community, obviously, where this is our way of life here, and probably a lot of council, and most people in town enjoy the sport, and our trail network is growing. And one of the main things is these people, these youngsters on the roads don't have insurance, the bikes aren't registered, where 99% of the bikes on the road are insured and registered, driven safely. And so obviously, we have a common sense approach. I have a common sense approach. I can't speak for public safety or anyone else, but.
Oh, on mic?
Okay.
Yep, so, so all right. So I kind of approach it with the youth as a common sense approach, and when they're identified, I will even, I won't, like Jeff said earlier, I won't give away my tool bag, but I will find the driver once I have a target in mind. And we will usually have a really good informative face-to-face and a little reckoning of what his or her consequences will be, and then, but really, why? And I'll explain, you know, fatalities and insurance and different things. And really, we've had some good success with some problem issues, especially up and around the school. And it'll always raise its head, and there's certain people within the community that have no transportation, and even if they didn't have an ATV, they'd be doing the same thing in a $500 car. So it's not really, in those circumstances where they're just driving up and down the road at all hours with no mufflers, no nothing, it may not be an ATV issue, it's an economic issue, and that's what they have. But we are dealing with it and finding them one at a time to ensure that they're safe. So as long as we get a name, then we're all over it, and we'll generate files and find them. So that's what we're doing.
Go ahead, Wade.
Just talk. So first off, thanks very much for being here. Appreciate this, and look very forward to being a regular thing. And I just wondered, like the daily occurrence report, I look at that and I watch that for trends, mostly for severe or serious crimes. Just wondering if you might be able to give a brief explanation of what we're seeing there? Because you might, because you know, you look at the western region, and you look at St. Stephen, St. George, whatever, and some days you go two, three days, you won't see anything for St. Stephen. So you kind of get the feeling that maybe things are going better. But can you kind of give an explanation as to what we're seeing there?
Yeah, it's, and you're talking about the online.
That's correct.
Tool that you're using off of our website. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, it's data-driven, it's fairly up to date, I'm going to say, but there's not a, there's, it's always in flux. So there's, it's never going to be a 100% accurate snapshot of what's going on because files are still under investigation, some files are getting changed, the scoring's getting changed. But it's, it's, it's data-driven. So if our data is not up to date and accurate, so I'll give an example. So if an officer, if we get a report of a disturbance in the parking lot here at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, you know, it's just a couple of kids yelling and screaming, and we, you know, we come and send them on their way. And our goal is to have those files, what we call written up or linked, before the officer goes home at the end of the shift. Oftentimes, the, you know, if, say, they get done with that, and then they get a major incident somewhere else, and they're, you know, they're dealing with that. So they might end up going home at the end of the shift, and the file's not scored properly. So it could be, it could be that. I'm trying to think of any other.
Yeah, there's just some administrative things, and even as part, I think, on their end, if someone's off for a few days, there could be a myriad of admin. There's very rarely ever a day, actually never a day, when we do not have any occurrences or anything. So I can't remember the last time we worked busy.
I'm guessing it's on the IT end, it's probably, you know, from the time it goes for, because it's going across at least one or two systems to get there and filtered. But I would say that it's probably a difference in lag in IT. But again, it's, it's, you know, for these reports, we're cutting it off as of a certain time, and they're pulling that data, and then they're managing it into the reports, where those daily occurrence reports can change, you know, I don't want to say almost daily, but they potentially, some of the files could change because of the scoring and different things like that. And then if a file is identified later, so we have, you know, occurrence dates, and then dates when it was reported. So somebody could come in and report and say, actually, you know what, last week, I was away to St. John for the weekend, and something got stolen. So then the date would show, would be backdated to whenever, you know, so it happened, a theft happened on the Ledge Road last week, where you're looking at it now, like, well, I didn't see that before. So yeah, things like that. Yeah, if that answers your question.
Well, I'm shocked, Sergeant, because I didn't recognize you.
Changed quite a bit since the last time.
I know that you mentioned how important education is, and that you do go to the school, but I wonder, like, do you do presentations to schoolchildren?
Yes, and not as many as we should, or we'd like, but we've got a variety of, we have a CPO, community.
Placing officer.
Placing officer, sorry, yeah. And she, she's primarily responsible for that. We try to get into the schools to do general talks on issues, and it's, it's kind of, we're kind of not waiting, but we would like the school to say, you know, can you do a presentation on this? Can you do a presentation on that? So I've been into high school a few times to do talks on, to the civics class on charter rights and freedoms. We have good discussion there. But yes, it's something I feel we have the capacity more to do, and I would like to get especially some of our younger officers in and get that experience, because I think that's an important part of our job. And not to diminish the job of our CPO, but I think it's, it's good for us to get in there and speak to people, so they, you know, the young people, they see us in a different light, and we build that relationship with them.
Because I know teaching at the elementary school. You know, we'd have the fire department coming. I mean, as teachers, you could talk about the rules and safety issue, but it made such a great impact when actually the firemen came. They really seemed to believe it more and more.
So I can speak, now I do it out of bias, but my daughters go to that school. So we, there's a few of us that participate in breakfast programs and other things there, and I live in that school. So I go by to harass teachers and students on a very, very regular basis, but I'm just biased. And I can also add, I did the numbers actually yesterday. Lisa Williams did 53 school presentations in RC-10 in the past three months. Yeah, in the last, in the last quarter, that was her numbers.
And we're way cooler than the fire department, no offense. I see Sean's not here, so I guess I'm okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. But we're very open to that, and if, you know, teachers or classes have specific ideas, we're more than willing to go in and, we have a, we have a wide variety of presentations on, you know, important things like cyberbullying and, and, you know, internet danger. And I've always plugged this one too. I've got a very good, some very good presentations on frauds, and not to, I'm getting to that age now, but to, for older people, because they seem to be the bulk of our fraud victims. And it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things that we don't really address, is like, you know, we'll talk about mischief break-in enters and impaired driving and stuff, but frauds are a serious problem, and we're seeing a lot of them. And I think the numbers of, in terms of dollars, that people in this area are losing on a regular basis to these frauds. It's, it would shock you. And 99% of the time, we're not able to locate the person because they're operating in another, probably another continent. So it's one of those crimes, I like to say it's 100% preventable. So if we, if we can do some presentations, and all you need is a venue and a group of people to talk to. So sometimes like seniors groups are a good place to start, I think, for, for those.
I'll see what I can do to help that.
Yes, okay.
Hang on, Councillor Harding? There it is.
Thank you, your worship. You can probably hear me. Anyway, I wanted to tell you that here in the last month, I had one of the best experiences with the RCP I've ever had. I made a call about a certain house that was in my neighborhood, and I had the most wonderful response, not only that day, but the day after. I did write a note to Scott, and he did pass it on. But it was a great experience, because really, I remember all of you guys, for 31 years, I worked on the other side with the CBSA, and you guys were there all the time. But things have changed so much. And all your resources now seem to be going into one thing, and that would be the drug situation. I mean, for many, many, many years, I was chair of police and fire, I, with every sergeant that you could imagine. And everybody tried to get rid of the drugs. But now that there are drugs, have got to a stage where they're just god awful. So I commend all of you for all the work that you do, because it cannot be any easy task to wake up in the morning and realize that you're going to have to go and dig people out of whatever for the whole day. So anyway, good luck to y'all.
Thank you for those comments, and I do want to say that I, you know, being back here for a year and a half now, I'm very impressed with the work of the guys and gals that work here. And again, it is, yeah, it is, it is a different type of policing than even when I first started. I will touch on the, on the mental health component of it, though. We're kind of trending in the right direction, that mobile crisis is starting to get their wheels moving, I guess. I know that they're, they've been kind of established up in RC-11 for a while, and their, their only complaint is that we weren't using them enough. So we've been really pushing, because they, they have been fantastic, and they're, they're starting here, and I really hope that that, it's going to equate to what they're doing up there. It's just they're, like everything else, they're struggling with resources and hiring people and whatnot. So that, that should help us a lot with the amount of time that we have to spend with, with mental health patients. But it's, yeah, I think it's going in the right direction.
Here we, oh, there we go. Thank you. Just getting back to another question, Sergeant, fraud. I, I don't think I'm probably much different than anybody else, but I've been experienced calls on this, your computer, home lines, sometimes they talk, sometimes they don't talk. Is that a, I was in the communication business all my career, and for the last, let's say, three years, your computer locks up, you have to get it unlocked somehow, or they're gonna, whatever. But recently, I know a woman personally, put down $1,500 or $15,000 in a book in a brown envelope, and sent it to this address in Ontario, because she just won $2.5 million. If it wasn't for the bank manager and the post office, this lady would have lost, I think it was $15,000. And they did get by it. Then the other thing is that myself, I got some problems with the computer, and I phoned up my McAfee, I think it was, and they said, from now on, when you get these, basically it locks up your computer. I know how to get out of it, and some people don't. Take a picture of it and send it to them, and they're going to investigate it. Because apparently, obviously, it's worldwide. And there are people actually, a vice president of the company I worked for, and I was quite surprised, he's supposed to be a computer literate, but someone this week got into and stole all his air miles. So it's not just money or anything else. So is this thing just exponentially growing now?
Yeah, 100%. It's one of those things that you, every time you think you've heard every possible scam, there's another one. You turn around, like, I can't believe they're doing this now, and you really feel for the victims. And it's, you know, there's a few key words, and people come in and they start talking, and you hear things. One of them's Bitcoin. I don't know anything about Bitcoin. I don't want to know anything about Bitcoin. But as soon as I hear that, I'm like, it's a scam. Or, you know, I met somebody online, and they're, they're asking me for this and that and the other thing, and they say they love me, but they want $600 to fix a flat tire, or like, it never ends. So no, you're right, it's, it's growing, and there's people that, that's all they do, that's their career, is scamming people. And every time we, you know, we think we know what they're doing, they're onto something else. So it's, it's, but it's, like I said before, it's 100% preventable with some education, so that's why I'd really like to be able to do some presentations, and, and people know, because the, the one that you saw in the media, I'm sure everyone's seen lately, is the grandparents scam, where, you know, the elderly person answers the phone and has a grandchild, and they, help me, I've been arrested, I need $5,000, or they're going to put me in jail. And, you know, out of the goodness of their heart, they're, they're accommodating that. And then it's, like you say, the same thing, they're putting the money in an envelope, and somebody's coming to their door and picking it up, and it's gone.
You want to keep going, you said? Oh, if you, if you can get it to go green, go ahead.
You and I must be on the same circuit.
There we go. Same circuit, there we go. Basically, I was asked in this, I don't see any sense of calling you people or your department because I did, I'd be on the phone all day and probably another hundred and fifty thousand people. The bottom line is I think it's an education thing. Basically, I get one call every month. My Amazon account, you owe me four, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Click. Amazon deals with me directly through emails and everything else. But it's going on constantly and I think, again, and I don't think it's part, part of your duties, but someone should be getting into the, particularly the older generation and warning just what you said. Now, with AI coming along, they can actually capture your voice and transmit it to their parents or grandparents and it's getting scary. But I know, we're not here to solve that tonight, but your work's going to be cut out for you and that you feel too.
Or their information has been compromised, we recommend they call us. So, oftentimes, you know, if somebody's been conned into giving their, their personal information, their social insurance number, their date of birth, address, things like that, we, you know, we kind of help them along with contacting the appropriate credit agencies and whatnot and make sure they, you know, they cancel things. But there is a, there is a global agency in Canada called the Canada Anti-Fraud Center and they're, they're online. And they, we always refer people to this as well, even if we can't do anything for them, because they track things at a global level. And oftentimes, you will hear it, and I think it was, I don't know, the fifth estate or something here not too long ago, where these, where the Canada Anti-Fraud Center, they work with Interpol and some international agencies. And they'll actually track some of these people down and put them out of business. Not saying that the people are going to get their money back, but they have had positive results. So, that's why we encourage people to report. I mean, every, we all get the, the emails or the phone calls or whatever, but as long as you're, you know, cognizant enough to recognize that this is not something I, I need to deal with and, and kind of ignore it, then we don't need to know about that, obviously. But if people have lost money or their personal information's been compromised, they should call us. At least, the minimum we can do is a little guidance.
Yeah, I, I would just add that not just phone calls, I, I mean, this was legit, but if, and this is my case, but they say a couple of people look like they're from Rogers, they come to your door and they, they got tags and stuff. But I, I do this, I did it just recently, have, call them and you can, they'll, they'll say, yeah, just call them and verify that they are there and they are for Rogers or Bell, whoever they're trying to tend to be. It's, it's worth the wait to do it. And it's, it's another thing. And, and with, like you said, with AI too, and, and you can literally have someone's voice. I, I would, like, I'm, I'm sitting here just thinking out loud here right now, I'd like, I'll be calling my parents to say, you know, if, if you think it's me, you know, ask me something personal or we'll make up a, something to try to.
I press the button easily. It must be my age. I'm good with technology. Roasted. I just want to thank you guys for being here tonight because it is wonderful to see that presence. And I've noticed something, I've noticed more of a presence in town and also I've noticed the relationship building to be able to see it downtown. Like, it's nice to drive by and sometimes you see individuals who might be having a mental health concern, but I can see the relationship building happening in real time. And I think the schools are super important. I think for a lot of the youth in our community, they feel stigmatized based on who their family is or maybe like past criminal history of family members and they can't really get away from that. So, at a time where I think it's most often, I find now it's poverty is really kind of leading to crime. And, and the same with adult abuse. Like, I do a lot of work with adult protection because I work with seniors as a social worker. And I just find that there's a lot of younger family members who live with an older family member who might be ninety with dementia, but they're relying on that old age pension and Canada pension because they can't live on the social assistance amount that they get. So, there's a lot of kind of that gray area that I find is extremely challenging because when somebody is ninety, has not gone for an assessment for their dementia, but is giving a child a debit card and then there's no money. It's the same with discharging from hospital, right? There's kind of, that's why they want the older adult to be discharged back to home, even though they shouldn't be at home because there's a financial piece. So, I, I just want to thank you for the work that you do because it's complex. And I know too, I had a family member recently get a call, my grandmother, where they actually knew a lot of her information. Like, they knew her address, they knew some of more personal information, like right down to maybe even her sin number. And it was a scam. So, that's challenging too now because not only are they calling and saying, I'm CRA, but they have certain bits of pertinent information. And she just happened to hear something amongst the seniors wellness group because somebody else in that group had worked with our CMP. So, it just goes to show how amazing that education is and keep up the good work and the good presence. And we're here to support you and please reach out to us too and tell us if there's anything we can do in terms of educating the public and sharing the information.
I have a couple of questions or want to comment. Usually my comments or, or questions are based on what citizens bring to me. I should probably make that disclaimer before I speak because a lot of the times I'm at Tim Hortons or my neighbors come over or somebody calls me because I'm a counselor. And so, I bring it up at council and it's not just my own thinking. It's, but the first question is, I can't seem to get this, it seems to be a gray area. The, the ones, the, the ATVs that are side by sides, that are insured and registered, are they still insured for on-road use and is that legal?
No, under the letter of law, they're not supposed to be operated on any road. However, I, you know, I can't, I can't sit here and, and say it's, it's okay. But as, as Corporal Lambert pointed out, it's, it's all about reasonability and what you're doing. So, if you're, you know, you're out in Moores Mill somewhere and you're traveling from point A to point B to get to a trail, you know, crossing a road or going down a road for a few hundred yards and crossing, you know, we're not looking to, to jam people up. But at, at a minimum, you know, we're asking people to have the vehicles registered and insured and, and the law says you're supposed to be sixteen years of age and have a driver's license if you're crossing a road because you're, I believe you're permitted to cross a highway. But again, it's, yeah, it's, for, for us and, and again, this isn't, we're looking for people that are operating safely in a safe manner. And when we turn the lights on to stop and talk to them, they just pull over and, and talk to us. And in that case, we're not going to give you a ticket for operating a vehicle on the road. You know, want to make sure you're not impaired and that, because, you know, it's, it's one of my personal beefs is that people feel that they can rip around with no insurance. Well, everyone here has to pay insurance. And as we all know, it's not getting any cheaper. So, if you run into me with an uninsured vehicle, all of a sudden, that's my problem. So, it's, it's kind of important. And that's the message we try to get out to people that, you know, at a minimum. So, no, the law doesn't permit it. Now, I know communities have passed bylaws to say that you can operate on certain roads in a certain capacity and you will see that. I believe St. George has, yeah, on, on certain roads and, and for that reason to travel through as part of a trail system. But again, it's, it's reasonability. So, I, there's no reason why anybody needs to be driving up Milltown Boulevard to King Street on an ATV. That's, that's absolutely off the books. But if you're out in the country somewhere and you're, and you're doing something reasonable, it's, you know.
No, I agree with that. I think it's common sense approach. And I think the citizens that I've talked to have said they don't mind them putting along to get to the trails or whatever. But there comes a point, like every night at nine o'clock, there's one ripping around up at the top of Queen Street and on Hawthorne Street. Is there anything that we can do as a council and as a community to, to help? Well, to help prevent that though, I mean, for access and everything, because the end of Hawthorne Street is one that's cut off. There's a guardrail on it. It's limited access. You're not supposed to go through it. There's one bridge that crosses a small stream and they're using that for access all the time. And they use it for, but the problem is the ATV club uses it as well. So, it's hard to go and let one group shut it off and then cut them off. And you know, that's going to be contentious even though they're not allowed to be on the road or anything, but they say they are. And then you're cutting it off to prevent them, because a lot of them, kids are taking them to school. I can tell you that right now. They're parked in the back of the school somewhere because I see them come across to Tim Hortons all the time and they're, and I, and actually the young fellow says, you got licensed? I just said it to him, right? And he goes, no, but I am getting a license. And he was a really nice fellow to talk to, right? He said, I'm getting a license. Mine is able to get licensed because it's at a certain CC. He said, those other two guys that are, they're parked, theirs on top of his because they don't have a kickstand or anything else when they're little tiny ones. He said, they can't get their license. And so, they're driving too, right? And so, they're, they were only two wheels. That was, that was all there. But, but I've, I've had my side view mirror going down King Street because I took a picture of one. I had him actually speed beside me on the outside of King Street on the yellow line, hit my side view mirror in my Tacoma with his, with his arm as he's driving by. And any female that was there, anybody driving the car, not my wife I'm thinking about, she would have just got scared and would have probably pulled them right off the side of the road. And it's just, you know, he would have been injured. And he was going, you know, you go the speed limit down there, fifty or whatever it is, fifty I think going down. And he hits the side of your mirror with his, with his fist and bends it backwards. That would scare somebody. So, I mean, that's what's happening. And, you know, I've had ran into it too, that parents have followed me home because they've said something to their son to slow down and, you know, just said, slow down. And he's going a hundred miles an hour going down, going down Queen Street, right? So, there's something we could do. We can talk about it.
So, I, I think there's two issues in your question and your statement. So, legal ATV owners, we are licensed, you have insurance, and we also pay the province of New Brunswick Trail Pass. And that finances a local thing. And whether it's a groom Trail Pass, and that's another hundred dollars every year coming up in, every December. So, that group I know is working to develop trails and stuff around the town. But the issue that you're talking about is, and I'll, I'll put on here, this is a good spot, is say that I'm, I've talked to the mayor before and I'm willing to work with the town, with council, liaise with any groups or whatever, to help develop something and maybe something that the town can do for routes to get these bikes off, to give them some access so they can, because that is not going to change. And which is the second thing is, so a person driving irresponsibly like they are with that, that's not an ATV issue, that's a person issue. And it wouldn't matter if they were in a pickup or they behave in, in, let's face it, in a, in a criminal way, in a very irresponsible and unsafe way. And it could be due to drugs. Again, it could be due to economics or the way they grew up. And we are always going to deal with those people regardless. But I will say that we now have a few ATVs here in St. Stephen. I have them actually here in town now and we have them geared up to start, we've been using them for patrols typically for search and rescue and things like that. But my intent is to be on the trails locally to have some compliance and just for them to see, we are out there, not just on the road, but we could be in the woods, we could be anywhere. And that knowledge and that forethought in the back of their mind kind of just gives them, maybe I better not, that's, that adult second guess. So, but I'm willing to work with you guys. I know we can use them for parades for everything, but even on the walking trails and anything else where you guys as a town deem that we may be able to develop something even economically to bring these groups, I know from the states and other places, into benefit St. Stephen. But, so, I'd put myself there to help if necessary.
Okay. Do you have anything more to add?
No, like I say, and we're really accessible if anybody. You know, as concerns, feel free to stop by. I, I'm, now I work between St. George and St. Andrews and St. Stephen and I get down to Campabella once in a while, but I'm, I'm usually not too far away. And of course, Scott as well and Peter, myself. So, like I say, just let's keep the lines of communication open and, and try to work at some of these issues.
Yeah, thanks so much. Thanks for coming in. And you're welcome in any meetings we have to come stop and say hi and give us an update. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the conserve the court, world's oldest basketball court update. Do you have anything there besides?
No, your worship, that pretty well stands for itself. I guess we're probably just, after Christmas holidays, we're probably just getting up and going again with some meetings. So, I just thought I'd provide that quarterly report.
Next up is the, the, the draft crosswalk policy.
So, kind of, I guess my opening statement would be, will apply equally to all three of the, all the policies that are on your agenda tonight. Given that it was the first meeting right after the holidays, Celeste was good enough to create our agenda with taking some of our working copy policies and getting them before you to get the process started. We had talked about crosswalk policy some time ago and I had said that I would, I'd do a little bit of research. I had, I'd sent some stuff around by email a while ago. And then we started kind of formulating our own to bring in front of you and, and get your feedback on. So, the work here is largely based on policies that I, that I've acquired from, from colleagues across the country that are, that are trying to do things like this. The key points of this one are, it's really about groups that want to undertake some work. They can apply, they can apply to us for, for colored crosswalks or whatever they would like for their, for their neighborhood. It does require some, some support from the surrounding area. We would require that in writing. And it's at the cost of the applicant. So, the, the small community group could put together some money to, to fund that installation. But, yeah, so I think, I think this was kind of the first salvo at, at trying to capture some of the things we talked about in the previous meeting. So, it's just here for your feedback, determine whether or not we should continue refining this and preparing it for, for further discussion. And if we're going in the right direction or if you guys want to steer us in, in a different direction to get it where you want it to be.
Counsel Harding?
Thank you. Well, I think that this is a really good draft, a good document. However, Counselor Heisler and I have been involved with this chap coming to see us, which happened before this was put in place. So, I'm wondering if maybe the one that I'm speaking about, the Legion one, would be, you know, would have to go by these guidelines or could that be a different, after, you know, could we put that first and then put this in afterwards?
But yeah, I, I believe that this would fit that, but I think I'd rather you go ahead.
This, I mean, it's, it's council policy. It's, so, it's always subject to councils' desires and whims. If, not all scenarios necessarily will fit this policy. If there's something near and dear to councils', you know, heart and they, they decide they wish to do something irregardless of the policy, you always have that ability. This just sets general rules for very basic applications to come in. You'll notice here that we wouldn't necessarily bring every application to you. We would, we would vet it administratively and, and proceed unless it, you know, there was something, something controversial that we thought we needed to come here. But if someone just wanted to put, you know, multicolored polka dotted crosswalk in their neighborhood, we would evaluate that and give them a costing for it and go down and follow the procedures here. But certainly, if there's something, a motion of council, you can, you can have something applied to this or overrule it and just, and then ask staff to do it as part of our normal operations.
Counsel Eason?
I think this is fantastic, to be honest with you. It kind of narrows everything down and focuses, puts the focus and onus on the individuals who want this done, you know. So, if they can raise the money, they can raise the public support and stuff. Now we got guidelines for it. I also like the, the portion you put in or whoever put this all together, put in about if, if one is submitted and taken on and, and now you've got to maintain it, then the maintenance fees come out of, out of them too, instead of the town and end up coughing up for this and tax, spending taxpayers' money for nothing. So, no, I think this is really good. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, and also like, once you, once you commit to it, it's your area. So, it's yours covered in there too as well. Counselor Otis?
I have a question too, that it might make it even easier. I wondered the difference, like, can an individual applicant apply or could we change it so that it's just community organization? So, maybe they have to have a nonprofit number, they have to be a, an actual organization. That way you could kind of sift out just individuals who want a random crosswalk, right? If they say, I, I want a polka dot crosswalk, that might be a complicated thing for us to discuss at council. But let's say it's the St. Croix Public Library comes forth and they have an initiative related to their organization, then it would all kind of tie in. And then we actually, for me, that makes me more comfortable because then you know you have the backing of an organization. then you know you have the backing of an organization behind it, so it's not one individual person. So even with this Legion crosswalk, I think it's a fantastic idea, but instead of one individual person, maybe it is, you know, a group of veterans, or the Legion itself coming forth and then proposing it. So then, then it would just be continuity, like that individual could go to the Legion and say, "I think this would look great in front of the Legion," and then, you know, collaborate with the Legion to bring it forth. It would just be a lot easier, I think, for us to, to have it go through policy and approve. If you know that it's already got support, then we don't have to decide if it's support worthy or not. I don't know. What should you think about that?
I, I think that's, that's why we've, we've built in the, the, the need for the petition of 60% of the neighborhood, because if, if it just happened to be the residents around Elm Park, say, and you, and you wanted to do something, you know, it's, it's, they may just be, you know, a bunch of people that live in the neighborhood, and they're not a formal organization, and it wouldn't require that step to formalize themselves just to do something good for the community. But we do require that, that petition from the neighbors to say, "Yes, we are, we all know that this application has come in, we're in support," presumably, you know, they've had some conversation about how the, the money's going to, going to work for them. But, you know, just, didn't we want to make it accessible to just the grassroots folks that want to do something good?
Okay, Counsel Heisler?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, that individual that's, that was talking to myself, and Counselor Harding was, was representing the Legion, and it's kind of a unique situation, because the, the Milltown Legion is no longer. So we did get funds already from that individual, actually it was probably from the Legion, to pay for this, so, I mean, so they've already done the legwork now, and they knew it wasn't possible before November 11th, but would like to have it for another November 11th. So I think there's going to have to be some back and forth there to see what they actually want, or they, they almost got to approve the design, because we, they probably don't, you know, they have an idea, because you see them floating all around just before the November 11th, you've seen them all on Facebook, and every community, one trying to do, outdo the other one, so the, I don't think they're, they want to do the design, so we might have to do that ourselves, or look at it, and kind of confer back and forth, say, "Is this appropriate?" Or, just something, I think, that they, you know, they would take, take a look at and see what, and trying to go and shore up the, the location and everything. So I think that was there. But there's another question I have there too, your worship, it's just on the text itself. So that's just a clarification on that, that's kind of a unique situation, though, that they don't have an organization, because it's already gone to vong, but, but the responsibility, I just find, I just have a difficulty with some of the wording in there, you might have to take a look at it, because our only responsibility, which is kind of redundant, saying council approves the color crosswalk policy, yeah, of course, there won't be a policy unless we, unless we go and approve it, right? So that's, and then it says here, "The applicant shall provide the design to the Municipal District of St. Stephen prior to installation at the time of request for approval." So just say approval by Public Works, or approval by council?
Yeah.
Because up at the top it says, "The, the Public Works and Community Services are going to review." So which one, who approves it? Public Works, you say you're not coming back to council, so we're not going to be approving them, so who's approving them? It's just a little bit wordy there, you just got to check the words, that's all, it's just a, I know it's a draft.
Yeah, I mean, in the very last section, or section 6.1, the wording is that it's, the official approval comes from Public Works, but Community Services is a, is a consulted department, so. Bring that back up to that.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at that.
Good job.
Yeah, Counsel Wright?
Thank you. My only comment was section 5.1, full support of the community or neighborhood, and showing a minimum support in section 5.2. I guess that where that's not defined, it would have to be understood that it's open to interpretation by the staff approving it, of, of what constitutes the neighborhood for that, and would it be considered the whole community, like the whole municipal district, would it be the downtown core, or if it's in a neighborhood, is it, what, what are the parameters for that? So I guess, that's, that's the only thing I saw, that it, it might be, raise some conflict if, you know, somebody just outside what was the approved area said, "Well, why wasn't I asked?" You know, so I don't know how you would tidy that up, but just so that we as council understand, if we approve that, that, that would be at the discretion of the staff, as to what constitutes that approval. Is it one street, two streets of neighbors, three streets of neighbors? So that, that could create some conflict potentially, potentially.
Okay. Just want to, just hang just a little bit there.
Okay.
Catch up there.
Okay.
No, hang on. Got you, Mayor?
Okay, sorry. I'm wondering about the crosswalks that are already here, like we've, the town has paid to have them installed, right, and we do maintain them. Do we continue with those? They don't have to go through the policy, is that?
That's, would be, that would be a council policy decision, as far as the, the truth and reconciliation walk, and, and the pride walk. There, we know that they'll, they'll be gone by, by spring, I mean, that's the nature of the, the paint we're allowed to use on the roads these days. What council, if, if there were certain ones that council is going to take ownership of, then Mr. Morton and I have, have been exploring, and it's even mentioned in this policy, is transferring over to the thermoplast, which is much better longevity, or we'd like to try a few, little more cost, but then we wouldn't have to do it every year, because it does, they, they do, they're not supposed to last. So, but that would be a council policy decision to say, you know, "All new requests come through here, but these ones are ours, and we want these installed on an annual basis, or use thermoplast, and so that they last three or five years." So, but that's totally a council policy decision.
Thank you.
Is there, you know, one of the Municipal District just doing this, so I can go look at one? That's, whatever the, the thermoplast, yeah?
Yeah, I'm curious.
Hmm?
Watch them online, you can look at.
Oh, no, I want to touch it. Yeah. I just wonder if it's slippery, I'm sure it must have a right texture on it and stuff, for say, like, I don't want it to be slippery.
No, they're, they're, they're very common now, especially in the bigger cities. We can do some investigation, see who, if who in New Brunswick has put some in. I would be, would be shocked if, if Moncton or Frederton have, has, hasn't done it, at least with some of them, because it is, you don't have to do them every, every season, right? And getting the, we know, from, you know, getting, getting painters in and having crews go is, is, is difficult, so. But we can look, we can see if we can find just some examples that are local.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Counsel Greenlaw?
So on the funding, are we going to, like, collect so many years ahead? Because if you're going back to the group every year to ask for the money, like, if you've got to repair it every two years, and it costs this much, you've got to go back to them, or is there five years, or, is it?
Five point one five.
Where? Five point one five? Yes, it's an indemnity, but I'm saying, how much do we collect from them upfront?
Whatever it costs, to initially.
Just, just initial, though?
Well, I mean, obviously, like, there's still some things to be figured out, depending on whether they choose to use paint or choose to use thermoplast, those would be different valuations. So we'll have to look at, you know, what's the upfront cost, what's the, what do we think the annual maintenance cost would be on it, and, and charge accordingly. But yeah, I, I would suspect that, I mean, we could make it even part of the application form of, you know, if it's a, if it's a one-off, they only want it for one season because of some special event in the neighborhood, great. But if they're saying, "No, we want to sign up for a three or a five-year term," we can have rates for that. So when we build the application form and those other regulatory details, we can, we can build those, those costs right into the system.
That's just a comment. Designs and stuff like this, sometimes are trademarked, and you got to, got to worry and watch how, how, how we borrow stuff to put down. So I know the Legion's big, big on that, eh, on trademark stuff.
Not to get right in the weeds on this, but the other, the other thing that just, that just come to me when you were talking, that let's say they just do a one-off year, well, I know they wear out, but they don't completely disappear, you know, so, you know, it could be worn out in the middle, and they're still, like, we got to have, I think we have to adjust it, there has to be, like a cleanup, like, if it doesn't, if it's only for a year?
Yeah, there's, there's still lots of nuances to work for.
Yeah.
Especially not, not a finished product, or, you know.
Okay, so how long, yeah, so on that, how long are we going to have this for us, before we bring it to the table to vote on? Like, we'll have, we're going to leave this for a bit, eh, because I'd like to have some more time with it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
First look, that's all that's going to...
Okay, good, all right. Okay, all right. Good discussion, okay. Okay, the next one is the public presentation policy for discussion.
Yeah, incorrectly typed onto the agenda, it's actually public participation policy.
So this, this has come from some of the conversations we've had about public participation, not only in the chamber, but overall, whether that be for budget, be that for municipal plan work, zoning bylaws, all, all those things that, that we require. What, the, the, if anybody's looking for the skeleton that this was built on, this is, I must say, relatively recent legislative changes in the province of Alberta. They actually wrote this right into their municipal act, requiring councils to pass policies that have this type of language, to pre-establish how public can participate in decision-making and goal-setting for the community. It, it came in long after my, I left Alberta, but when I read it, I liked the concept of that, of a very strategic and deliberate approach to public engagement on specific items. And, you know, this, this puts a lot of responsibility on, on the CAO office to, you know, to, to present you with the public participation plan, say, "This is how we're going to conduct it, these are the dates, these are the, sort of the material's going to be," and deliver that before the decision-making time comes in. So this will, in, in a sense, my, my, my concept, my thinking around it was, I think this needs to work hand in glove with whatever public participation type forum you have during committee of the hall, during council, because this should actually take some of the burden off of those meetings, I would hope, because those are very, not, those meetings, as important as these meetings are, they're not overly conducive to public, to real public input, to real public feedback, whereas the plans that are designed here will be actual, actually designed to receive that information, evaluate the information, make changes, give feedback, so a better forum. So I think some of the demand for community input that happens in this room will actually be transferred to another, to a more appropriate venue. Not saying you, you know, you should all, you should have public participation in this room, but if there's a public, a public participation program ongoing at the time, you probably are going to want to look at your bylaw to say, "If there's a public, we're not, we're not going to entertain it at the council chamber, because you have a valid spot right now to deal, to bring, to bring, have that conversation." So you may want to look at your, in meetings there, but it's supposed to be, my, my concept of it is hand in glove with the changes you've asked me to look at for the procedural bylaws. But, but this, I think it's a big step in the right direction, as far as making sure the public has a clear understanding of how and when they can participate on decision-making, or at least influence in decision-making, because we will actually have to formally present you a plan and have you approve it, and I would assume, hold me accountable, that it actually gets done. So I think that's a huge step for us to, to go down this road. Generally open, open to all comments, all concerns, as I said, this is another first look version, but I, I, I'm getting, the more, the more I've worked with this ball, this document, the more comfortable I get with the, the concept, and I think we're going to have much better product with a lot of our decision-making and a lot of our goal-setting items, if we follow a path like this.
Counsel Otis?
I'm super excited about this. I think it's excellent, I think it's actually what we've probably been missing all along a little bit, because I do find in our, in our council meetings, you know, we get feedback here and there, but we don't get in-depth feedback that we can actually implement and have the time and space to kind of talk about things, and then actually move forward with citizens. I find we get thrown a lot of information, whether it's through social media or at the podium, but we don't actually have the time to, like, unpack it. And sometimes, it's also about our CAO having the opportunity to explain certain concepts to members of the public, so we can move forward together, because there are certain things that we can and can't do on a municipal level. The other thing I like about it is it actually sets boundaries, because I think boundaries are really important right now. The only thing I worry about, Jeff, is you are incredibly busy, and people don't know what goes on behind the scenes on the day-to-day, so public participation does not necessarily, to me, mean we're opening the floodgates, and you can give us every little ounce of feedback that ever comes to your mind on the day-to-day. But for me, it's a more intentional way to gather that information, and I like the fact too, that it's noted that public participation is required to be respectful and constructive, and that it has to be professional and respectful on both sides. And I just think lately, that's been something we're missing. I feel that we're actually moving in a really great direction. I'm really excited about 2025, we have a lot of great things that have happened, and you've done a lot of excellent work. But we still have these, these certain topics that keep getting brought up, and I think we do need a better forum that's structured to be able to talk about that topics and have that public engagement. So I think it's amazing, the only thing I worry about is just, I read back on page 20 of the package, when new programs or services are being established, the way it's laid out now, it's that you would be required to develop and implement a public participation plan in the following circumstances. So when council priorities are identified, or existing programs and services are being reviewed, your office, that happens, like, on the regular, you know, where we're always identifying sometimes new priorities, or establishing new programs or services. So the only thing I would worry about would be your time, and then, you know, telling the public that every time we make a change, you will have an opportunity to be a part of the discussion. I just want to make sure there's a good boundary. So maybe it's just a quarterly session, where there's certain topics that have been brought forth that we discuss. I don't really know what it would look like.
Yeah, and, and I think one of the things that we have, that we have to establish as well, is each, we, we want to be, in order to make this work, we have to be very deliberate in being open and honest with the public as to when we, when we're seeking their opinions and when we're not. Doing a cursory thing of saying, "Hey, you know, we're, we're looking at changing this bylaw," and, and, you know, just send us a note. I mean, you're better off not doing that as a public engagement than you are doing it so, you know, non-committed to it. So I think when we look into, when we look at, you know, the, how we're doing it, I mean, there's definitely different, different levels of, of things, where it's just, it may just be, it may just be that this is currently up for review, here's the, here's all the background or information, and here's a portal where you can put your comments in. That is, you know, it's not an overly engaging one as far as, but it could be a cursory one. Whereas when we get into municipal plan, when we get into strategic planning, budget, I think that's, that, that we, we owe it to the citizenry to be more engaged in that, and do, go, use some of the other tools that are listed, the town hall meetings, the, you know, open up, open up the toolbox a little bit more for certain things that we really want that feedback in, but we have to be very upfront about, is this a one-directional, just send us your comments, and we'll take them under consideration, or are we actually getting into a dialogue where we actually want to explore ideas with, with the general public, and, and, and have two or three meetings to to feed back on, on what we've talked about since the first meeting, right? So we have to be very strategic in which tools we apply in which situations, and I think if we're very upfront about that with the public, I think we'll get a much better response. And in, in my past experience, I think that's where you get much more respectful meetings, is you're very, you're, because you're so upfront about what the, what we're doing, and what, and what level of participation you're going to have, you're not, you should not, you know, you shouldn't have difference of expectations if you're upfront right from the get-go.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make it clear, though, that there's still always public input on every topic we talk about through, through the, the way we're structured now, but this, I think, it's going to be certain topics, as, as you alluded to, that, that would take some interaction, and, and to get, just as we talked with the police, and education, and, and all that kind of thing that goes along with it. Did I hear, see a hand over there? Yeah, Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just actually going to make the same point that you just did, that whenever anything is mentioned at council table, citizens always have the right to reach out to the mayor or their counselor to express their opinion on any, anything, and that can be taken under consideration. So this is just opening it up to make it more formalized, I guess, and I, I also want to make it clear that when you say it might reduce the need to have... reduce the need to have stuff, have comments, or, or certain things happen in, in committee or council meetings, doesn't mean we're trying to eliminate that, this is a way to enhance that and make that better, and get better dialogue and better feedback. So, I don't want it to be misconstrued as we're trying to shut down dialogue or diet, or debate at, or comments, I guess, at, at the council meetings or at committee of the whole meetings. This should be looked at as the whole package of enhancing what we're doing, and also, just to make a comment that when we haven't been doing this, it's not that anything's trying to be done secretly or in the dark, or, or behind closed doors, or anything like that, just, we're busy, we're handling a lot of files, it hasn't always been able to just implement everything we want to do all at once. So, sometimes it's just been a matter of timing that we haven't been able to do as much as we would like to do. So, just wanna say, I think it's, it's good, it does make a lot of work for your office again, Jeff, but I, I, I think that as part of growing and moving forward, we, we take steps and, and then we grow to meet the need. So, I like it.
Okay, you got another one? Counsel Rotis?
I think, to me, the other thing is, a lot of people don't understand, we have two types of meetings, like, we have a committee of the whole meeting, which is really just an opportunity for council to have dialogue with each other, that's what we're doing tonight, we're not making any big decisions, we're just talking with each other. And it's nice, because you can kinda gauge how other councillors are feeling about certain things. The regular council meeting, obviously, we make decisions, but to me, this is almost an extension of committee of the whole, as in, we're talking here about things that matter to us, so if something that comes up, that we actually would like further engagement from the public, then it would be nice to have some of these committee of the whole topics extended out and focus on the same things, so that it's all in alignment with the strategic plan, like, tonight, having the RCMP here, that's amazing, and maybe, we have an opportunity for citizens to give us more feedback on some questions that they had, so that we can pass that along. So, I like the idea, to me, it, it's almost like an extension of our committee of the whole, opening up the floor, and people have said that, too, that they wish they could make more comments during the committee of the whole meeting, but I think part of that is not understanding the difference between the two meetings, and it's really because we had a ton of committees at the beginning, but we, we were all so separate that it was hard to stay on the same page. So, committee of the whole is nice, because now I know exactly where everyone stands, and I don't have to find who's the chair of what committee to figure that out. So, I like that, too, it, it definitely does seem like a COW, a COW, extension, as we've been calling them, so, great work. And thanks for listening, too, Jeff, to the public as well, because this is what people have been asking for, and this is what we're giving them, so, that means a lot, too.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the other, the other thing is, isn't, it's not that we don't want public, public input, it's, it's, we'd be here all night, is the problem. Like, you don't, you, you never lose the opportunity to talk to a councillor or a mayor anytime, you pick up the phone or say, can I meet you with you someday? You can have those discussions, that's, that's our, that's our role, actually, is to have those discussions, it's not just our two meetings a month in here. And, you know, you get, and then that prepares us better, because we may not be an expert on this, but there might be someone, that the top of the, we're talking about is, you know, is a specialist in that, and they, they'll give us that specialist input, right, on certain matters, instead of us, you know, sometimes you gotta go find them ourselves, but, yeah, anyway. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
To add on to Counsel Rotis there, yeah, a lot of these discussions we do have in council are people, citizens, that have brought things to me, at least to me, right? And I'm sure that all you, everybody gets approached on the thing, and they say, can you ask about this, or can you, so we do that in here, it's not me that's speaking half the time, it's on behalf of somebody else, and so that's, you know, so we're, we're talking about that, you know, but I'd like to see more people approach, rather than hear them somewhere else and talking about it, and saying, well, jeez, you could've just asked me in the beginning, or I would've brought it to council, right? That's no fun, then, right, no, so, no, not entertaining.
All right, so if there's any more stuff you wanna add, you can fire it off at Jeff or I, and we'll add it, add to the draft, and bring it up for discussion again. Okay, next up is tourism accommodation levy bylaw for discussion.
So... Sure, so this goes, dates back, I think it came up during some of the early budget discussions, about the, the revenue-generating tool that, that is in our act and available to us, as far as the tourism accommodation levy. The text is largely, was supplied by our friends in St. Andrews, who have a number of years more experience on, on this particular file than, than I do. But, we, we had made a commitment to, to the committee to, to draft, to, to work on the draft and bring it forward for, for your further consideration and discussion. So, it's here for, for that, and before, again, first look, but it's more, are we going down the right road, do we wanna go down this road? If not, we won't dedicate more resources to refinement, if we do wanna go down this road, if there's concerns, there are questions, let us know, and we'll, we'll take it back and tweak, and do some tweaking on the wording, or whatever needs to happen.
Yes, thank you, Jeff, for putting this together, as, as I, because I think we do need to get something in place, I know, I, I always, always been putting this on the back burner, because we didn't have the, the big H beside us over there, hotel, and, but then I come to find out at a meeting with, with, with St. Andrews, actually, was, you know, there's a lot, a lot of benefit to it, and it wouldn't hurt to get this in place, anyway, because we're gonna have that soon. Do you, Counsel Greenlaw?
So, yeah, so it's good to explain the why, and explain the benefit of it to all the people, it's also good to maybe go out and talk to some of the, some of the, the people that run the hotels and the campgrounds and all this kinda stuff, to see if it's gonna be a burden on them to have to collect this additional tax, I'm sure there's good examples of it in St. Andrews, they can say, it's, it's not much extra work for the, for, you know, whoever the, the, the business owner is, or it is a lot of work for the, for the business owner. Some rough numbers of what we think we're, we're gonna get, and how the, you know, it's in here how the money's split up, but it'd be nice to say, if there's extra money, this is how, how it goes back, and this is how you'll see the, see the benefits from it, so we should, and this is a great example of where you, we just talked about the public consultation policy.
That's where I'm gonna go with it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think, I don't know if you said it, but it's, it's, I know it can be, it's gonna be a hindrance, obviously, but there's, 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 there's a win in it for, for, for people that are housing or accommodating people, is, you're gonna increase more accommodations, and events will increase accommodations, and anything we can do for tourism, benefits everyone.
I spoke to people in the US that do this many years ago, and they explained that tourists come in and use the infrastructure in the, in the community, but they don't pay property taxes, so they use the roads and water and sewers and the, and the different things, so they're actually impacting the, the infrastructure, but they don't pay anything, like, you get the taxes from it, so what they said is, we're gonna put a little levy on to help with that. So, that was just one explanation, I don't know if it's valid here or not, but...
Yeah, we're a little, we're a little more limited on, on where the funds can be used and how they can be used, based on the way the act is written in New Brunswick. But, but I mean, certainly, when we collect it, and we can use it for tourism promotion, we can use it for tourism attraction, tourism development, it's all, it's all things that, that bring, hopefully bring more people to these establishments to, to, to pay this fee. Having just been, you know, through Europe, every hotel we stayed at, it was, it was tagged on there, it's, it's becoming expected by most traveling public, whether it's us going to Fredericton for a meeting, or whatever, it's, and, and if it's a way for us to, one, offset some of the costs we incur for, for tourism through the RSC, support some tourist, some local tourism events, and, and, that bring, that bring more dollars into the downtown and into the businesses, without hitting the taxpayer, at the end of the day, it's, like, our local taxpayer, it's, it certainly has a lot of benefits capable. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure we do it the right way, and, and we have the capacity to apply it, to, to implement it in the, in the correct manner.
Counsel Rotis?
So, for instance, if you're, if you're running, for instance, an Airbnb, then you would have to charge the tourism levy to pay it. So, I'll speak on that, because I've been thinking about this a lot recently, and I actually just myself launched an Airbnb. So, from doing it, it's an incredible amount of work, it's actually a lot of additional time and cost to get it up and running, and here in St. Stephen, I think the only thing that, that could be interpreted negatively, and what I see, is that we don't have any other accommodations right now. So, when we have a hotel, it's different, but when we have nothing here, and then you're kind of expecting the business owners who are running these smaller places to be able to offer accommodations, then it, it feels frustrating, because there's nothing else here, so it's almost like a deterrence to starting those types of things. Now, I see both sides of it, too, just, I know from being a sports parent, that it is impossible to usually, for people to come here and stay, like, there's literally nowhere to spend the night, so it's a deterrent for even sports teams that are coming in, they can't find accommodations to stay. So, to be able to have people run small Airbnbs or smaller sites where they can accommodate a few people, it's a helpful thing, I just don't wanna deter, like, it deters me when I'm reading it, I just think, oh, my gosh, it, it's already cost me a lot to get it up and running, it's a lot of work, and this is just one more thing, and it's not worth it.
I, I would just add that, right now, you, you don't, because when you're the only game in town, there's, everyone's just dying to find a place, right? But when that happens, there's gonna be some freed-up room, so we're gonna need to have to work harder at bringing more stuff here to bring more people. So, so that's, that's kinda why I start, I wanna start this now, I don't know when we actually pull the trigger and actually start doing it, but I wanna get this going. And, it, it's because we're gonna need it, you know? Holy, what did I do now? Okay, I'm gonna start with Counsel Heisler.
Yeah, the one thing is not finding accommodations in our municipality is they go to St. Andrews and pay the fee, anyway. Right, so, so that's what happens with that, but I mean, these Airbnb, Airbnbs, and I'm sorry, but they're, they're so unregulated now, and they're looking at a spot to get, pay the taxes, the appropriate taxes on them, so, that's, that's in the works, too, now, so, so, just to be a heads up for anybody starting that, but I know there's a lot around town, because I didn't even know, like, I'd be helping somebody mow their lawn or something, they say, oh, yeah, I've got an Airbnb, and I say, what? So, there's a lot of them around, we don't know about.
Counsel Eastman?
That's exactly my point, I asked Alex Henderson, not too long ago, to bring up the data on how many accommodations we have in this town, and they have, they haven't got a clue, they haven't got a clue, they, they've got a, they, they'll send you to a website on their, their site, and it gives you a brief idea, but it's not a certain. So, having people register their, their, their things like this, then we do have the data upfront. And, and for the levy itself, being hard, all you gotta do is make sure your invoice is done right. Because if your invoice is done right, you're gonna be, put in HSD anyways, and you're gonna friggin' put the levy in there. So, it's, it's not that hard.
Counsel Ray?
I was just gonna say that when you're in business, any kind of business, sometimes of the rule changes, you know, legislation changes, and we have to adapt and, and move. So, while I understand frustration of another step involved, I also think that we are lagging behind, it's, it's, it's almost unheard of, I've never stayed anywhere recently where there's not a levy. I don't travel a ton, but when I do go somewhere, there's the levy on there, and the big thing I like about this is that it clarifies that some of the money collected is going to pay for our FC, our SC levy that we get imposed upon by the Regional Service Commission for Regional Tourism, so it will help with that cost, reducing the impact on the taxpayers as well. And, you know, to Wade's point about some communities view tourism as a drain on their infrastructure, I wouldn't look at it that way, because if they're coming here, well, they're spending tax money, and they're giving more income into the community, which then flows, stays here, so I, I'm glad that we're not using it for those purposes, I like, I like the idea, I'd like to proceed.
Yep, Counselor.
I'm just curious, too, would this ever deter a hotel in any way? Would this be something that, if we haven't implemented this, would actually be a draw to our community for a hotel to come here, if we haven't established a formal bylaw?
No, because, I mean, we've, we've explored this with, with hoteliers in the past, and because it's, it's a flow-through cost for them, it's, it doesn't change their, their, their math, as far as whether or not their business is gonna operate, because they're just, yeah, they gotta pay a fee, but they're collecting it from their, their guests. It's one-for-one, so it does not impact them, as, as, kinda goes to Counsel Eastman's point, once, when they set up their billing system, it's just a line on their, on their system that says, charge 15% HSD and, and 3.5% VAT, and done. So, it's, the, the hoteliers have said it's not a, not a concern for them, the ones that we've talked to in the past, anyway.
Exactly, I, I, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not, I'm gonna use the worst tax grab here, it's, we're doing it to benefit the accommodating, accommodations, I mean, we gotta, like I said, when, when that happens, and hopefully that happens soon, we're gonna have rooms to, rooms to use, right, so we gotta, we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta be in the game to, to create more events, and, and support the tourism advertising and all those sorts of things, and, and you're accountable where that money goes, too, by the way, it's, it's all laid out, it has to go to these items. But, yeah, again, it's still, it's still a draft, and anything more? Yeah, Chevy and the levy. All right, all right. Okay, so next up is concerns about potential pollution of St. Croix Waterway, Counsel Cornish.
If we could just put up the first slide, Jeff, just the very first one. Okay. How much time have I got, Mayor, five minutes? Keep me in control, I'm not gonna go off the, okay. All right, throw something at me, whatever. Basically, over the last several months, I have been contacted and personally been involved with what I feel is potential pollution in Ward 1, 2, 3, and probably the entire area. As a resident of Ward 1, and representative of Ward 1, and the Municipal District of St. Stephen, I want to live near the nature, nature spaces that are working in a healthy way. I wanna live near swimmable rivers, lakes, I wanna have clean air quality, and that's why a lot of people are moving here. Now, that's something I got a, a post on the internet. First of all, a personal story, just to get to the point. First of all, I wanna say, there are three types of general pollution, one is called air, one's called water, and one's called visual. You are now experiencing visual pollution, you are looking at me, okay? Okay, on the rest of it, personal story, it won't take long, but this actually happened. About 1964, the Woodland Mill, whatever it was called at that time, dumped toxic waste chemicals into the St. Croix River during the night. Coming on my parents' house, located 28 feet from the bank of the river, I smelled a very, very strong odor that smelled like sulfuric acid or sulfur. Eels were actually crawling across the lawn of my parents' home, trying to get out of the water to another safe water place. Eels will cross land to get to water from one spot to another. Dead fish were floating in Bering Bay, Bering Bay flows into what we used to call Milltown. The river was, you could see them, white bellies everywhere, smell everywhere. As a student, I was driving from Upper Mills to my summer job in St. Stephen, driving through Milltown, I observed the white houses in particular, along the route, paralleling the river, were turning brown. Sulfuric acid-based products and lead paint do not mix well. The paint was actually peeling off the houses, and I was breathing that air, along with probably some of you people at that time. My question tonight, to you, the residents and council of Municipal District of St. Stephen, are we going to have another back-to-the-future environmental catastrophe? This has lived with me all my life, and I'm a very high user of the river, and I'm very frightened, scared, concerned of what potentially is happening. Pollution of our river is not new to the old girl. It started back in 1906, when the pulp mill was first opened, those chemicals were used at that time, producing, well, they produced pulp and paper at that time. I wanna put this point out here, I'm not an expert on pollution, nor am I pointing fingers at any group, individual, or company. I'm here to try to get action on what I feel is a dangerous health situation in the region. I'm here to try to get action on what I feel is a dangerous health situation in the region. I'm suggesting in the best interest of the residents of Municipal District St. Stephen that requests, I had the word emergency, I want to use the word immediately, I don't like the word timely, action to rectify this dangerous water and air situation. In my brief research, I have spoken to several individuals that seem to have some high level of education knowledge on how this brown water and sulfur smell is saturating the air quality and the waters of the Municipal District of St. Stephen and the actual, probably down to the Bay of Fundy. Apparently, the mill has a mechanism called a scrubber. This mechanism is supposed to be managed to remove any pollutants and deposit in holding areas before it empties into the St. Croix Waterway. But according to my sources that have been directly involved with some of this, the mill ad hocly blows scrubbers into the river. In other words, they blow the pollutants out of the scrubber and into the water. This sulfuric acid-type smell in the air and the black liquor, as it is called, is the brown foam that people are seeing in the, on the water and smelling in the air. It is starting to reoccur on a regular basis according to constituents and the general public along the rivers on Sundays and Mondays. And Counselor Harding is going up and down like a doll in the back window of a car because she is one of the, uh, let's say, co-authors of this concern. This is when we get the toxic brown, smelly foam in the water, passing through the Municipal District of St. Stephen on its way to the Bay of Fundy. I read a report from one of my old biology teachers who I actually worked for, uh, on a study, I think he completed around the year 2008 or something like that. And basically, it basically, at that time, the water was polluting things like clams and mud and everything else way down by St. Andrews and into the bay. If you want to read it, it's on there. Art McKay was his name, and, uh, I knew him very well. I used to collect lampre eels for him, a fun game. Health risks, okay. Health risks to our region to me is very frightening. Does the weekly exercise of blowing the scrubbers have any detrimental effects on lung disease, cancer, fish, fish ingestion of chemicals, wildlife, and shellfish? I don't know. I'm not a biologist, but I can smell it, I can see it, and I'm frightened of it. Removal of the dam built in 1881 and decommissioned in 2004, was, was this a wise decision before we rectified the pollution situation? Removing the dam should allow some fish species, including salmon, l wives, and other cat, lipish like gasparo, to go up the river to spawn. If the river is polluted from the Milltown location of the old mill, of the old dam, up to Woodland Main, and the species are theoretically ingesting pollutants, and if they are, what has effect, does it have an effect on the total population, on the fish below and above the dam? St. Croix River, I think, is 125 miles long and goes through several large lakes. And what the, one of the reasons of the dam, because of, it was not being maintained for some time and it was becoming a hazard, it was that the Aboriginal population wanted the river open so that more species could get up the river. So, more species going up the river ingesting toxins probably is not good. In closing, in closing, I am not a pollution expert. I'm only a representative of the Town Council representing your concerns on this issue. Let's work within unison with appropriate, with appropriate resources to rectify this potentially dangerous situation. I have indirectly, indirectly trying to get a grasp on why this is taking place again. I've been told it's never stopped, and Marg is agreeing with me. What I don't understand is, I understand there are several international studies taking place on it. That was two years ago, I heard that. What's being done? We not, we're not hearing anything, and obviously nothing's being done about it. I'm suggesting that this council make a formal request to the Department of Environment to investigate the current situation immediately. Possibly as one individual in the field, one of the first steps, we placing portable air and water monitors at designated locations for gathering data on this health situation. Apparently, what I've been told, these have not been used for several years, therefore there's probably no data. In one article I read, and it was 2016, maybe the last time anything was even looked at, and maybe nothing was done about it. Now, I'm going to show a few slides that, just for momentarily, and that'll be it. In closing, I invite you, would you like to take a jog and a swim in our river followed by a fish dinner at my house? No?
It's too cold.
Could we have the next, could we have the next slide? On this slide, if we blow it up here, Jeff figured out how to use PowerPoint again. There we go. That's a portion of the town of St. Stephen. The red dots, I have individuals reporting to me about the situation of smell and the brown suds on the water. One is actually at my old homestead in Upper Mills. The gentleman there says he gets up and he says, "The smell and the brown foam, you just can't, you can't figure out where it's coming from. It's brown, it's not white." The next one is a member of our council, Marg Harding, sitting right here, who's probably going to speak in a minute about the situation right in front of her house, where she experiences this herself. The next spot is downtown. Couple of businesses there have spotted it, thought it was the mud flats, but eventually found out this brown stuff is the stuff that's making the smell, in addition to the mud flats, which we can't do anything about. The last dot on the far right-hand side is, uh, at the end of McGee's Lane, where just up from that, there's a causeway that goes out to Little Island. And there, there are several ladies that swim there, and they have experienced the brown stuff in the water so bad that they swim on the left-hand side of the causeway, on the left-hand side rather than the right-hand side because the water is so polluted looking. Jeff, could I have the next one, please? The next one here, I'm, I have a hard time saying this, I don't want to be held accountable, I guess, but the bottom line is the only, what I've found out from many avenues and people, there's only one thing on the river that is potentially, I'll use the word potentially, uh, involved, directly involved with the pollution of air and water, and that would be the Woodland Mill. I don't know what it's even called now. But anyway, that facility is definitely what most people are saying is dumping it in. The yellow lines indicate what I feel is called air pollution. I smelled it bad this summer. The other yellow line on, on there basically is, uh, uh, up around the, uh, Marter settlement area. The other line that goes in the middle, that is another counselor sitting from my far right, Mr. Earl Eastman, he smells it down that far. And down the furthest one is Wade Greenlaw, and he is way at the end of it, and he smells it down there. Now, could I have the next one, please? I guess in closing, a symbol to the left is a standard symbol for showing a pipe with water flowing out of it. And I'm assuming that the contaminants, the smell, the air coming off those scrubbers that are being blown, I'm not sure what the actual, how this thing happens, but it's producing an environmental effect on our community that I do not want to go through again. I moved back here 15 years ago to retire, and, uh, there's a lot of people moving here. I hope the heck they don't turn away from us because we're not looking after a situation that should have been looked after for a long time. So, in conclusion, that's what it looks like. It looks like we're being contaminated potentially on Sunday evening and, and Monday morning, and how long it takes to drain off and float away depends on the wind currents and the water and the tides. So, based on that, I'm asking council to create a resolution, a presentation to Environment Canada in New Brunswick, and, uh, I think that's it. Marg, I think you'd like to say something.
Oh, thank you. Good presentation. But keep in mind, this didn't just start yesterday. This has been going on forever. Every Friday night, or, pardon me, every Saturday night, there used to be a guy up the road looking down and say, "Jeff, you got a camera?" And Jeff would say, "No." And he'd say, "Well, I want to take a picture of the river. Look at the white stuff in the river." And this went on for years and years and years, probably 15, 20 years. Now, when I look over, you can't see anything except snow, so I don't know what it is. But, the, the globs of brown, whatever that is, I don't know. That is just pathetic. But, not only that, the river itself is polluted. There is everything in that, all the old boards and everything from the old mills and whatever is sticking up through, and it is just a disgrace as far as I'm concerned. I've been to MB Power, I've been to John, uh, what's his name? Ames, and I have letters written to five different media outlets. I haven't pressed send yet, but I've got, I've got them written to come down and take a look at the river. And part of it includes the brown stuff that you see. Like I say, it's winter now, so, and there's no smell now. I don't have a smell now. But, I live in the prime location. I look at it when I go to the car, I look at it day by day. So, but right at this time, uh, the, the brown would be on the American side. So, but good presentation, and yes, thanks for bringing it to the forefront.
Yep, good Counselor.
I want to thank you both because this is near and dear to my heart too, growing up on the ledge because I often kayak. I never thought about the days and times, but now that you say the days and times, it makes sense. But, there are huge amounts of this, like, brown thick foam, and there's tons of other stuff that I, I do believe is flowing from maybe some of our old infrastructure as well. And so, for me, this is near and dear. I, I know too, working in healthcare in this community, the rates of cancer in our community are unreal compared to other communities, and I often worry about that. I know that they're starting to bring more awareness about radon gases and things like that, but I do think climate change and pollution and environmental issues are overwhelming for everyone because it's just, when we think about climate change and pollution, we think about the whole world, and it just gets overwhelming, and we often do nothing. But this is something actually that the Pascudimacadi Nation too is also very passionate about this issue, and they have some funding too. And we also have a new government who's also very passionate. So, I think if we had, you know, our municipal council, the Pascudimacadi Nation, and then also, you know, the new Holt government, bringing this forth and bringing awareness around it is not a bad idea at a time where there's already some changes happening because it is really important. I mean, I've fallen out in the canoe one time in front of, um, my mom's house, and I was covered in brown film, like I couldn't get it off. So, I know what it's like. Even when I'm kayaking, I love to kayak, I love the river, but the smell sometimes is overwhelming, and I would never, ever even put my legs in up to my waist because I know the film and it's challenging to get off. So, it's just a shame, right? Because we do, it is such a beautiful river and it deserves love and care. It's just challenging when it's an international river as well because then there's so many other players at the table. And I can imagine that's probably part of the reason why it's never been taken on because who owns it? But if we have, if indigenous communities are also passionate about this, this is one thing we can all agree on. We may not agree on the use of the river per se, like whether or not we have recreational things happening or, you know, the fish or things like that, but we all agree that we want a clean river. So, that's something that, that legacy money would go a long way.
Counselor Heisler?
Yeah, I don't even know where to start. Um, ooh, I do have a lot of background in this, actually, so. Brown stuff's called lignosulfanates. They're just big cells of sulfanates that, because we did a lot of work down at the Lake Utopia, they're going to take out that dam there. Remember, it used to be called Stinky Hollow until they put that dam across the water? So, so if you're, acid is developed not just straight from chemicals, it's also developed underneath the water. So, if you, if you're shutting off, what was happening, it was a lens of salt water was coming over the freshwater, it was shutting off the oxygen to the, to the, underneath and everything that goes in the bottom, which is all fibrous that comes out of that plant down there. It's the same type, it's a paper pulp mill down there, so all the fiber goes down there. You can walk on it in the summertime, it's just like a cardboard box. So, and when it shuts off the oxygen, it starts to produce hydrogen sulfide. So, hydrogen sulfide seeps up through the bottom, and that's where you get that smell. Remember, you used to go by there and there used to be, even the, even the guardrails would be, these peeling off and everything, and houses and everything else. Remember, we used to really, we used to close the nose and all the vents when we went there, by there with kids. So, it's the same thing, it's a pulp-producing mill. No doubt that that's been producing stuff. I mean, I've seen that too, and I know the, you got all valid points. The problem is proving it. The problem is, I'm just, just trying to point out what the difficulty is to have this looked into. It's an international one, so they have, the St. Croix Waterways Commission has done multitude of studies on this, multitude, water samples all the time throughout the year, right down to Oak Bay. They've monitored all the time, they, I don't know if they still are, I'm sure, I know that, I think they are, right up until about two or three years ago. And the executive director, I know quite well, I haven't talked to him for a while, see what the results are. But they're, you know, it's that, and who sits on their board? There's, uh, there's players from Canada, there's players from the US. And where do you think one of those players on the board is from? That place you have a picture of there in the corner? Right there in that nice little picture there with the thing, with the smokestacks and everything? And so, you know, and then governors and former governors and everything else. So, it's a lot of political stuff going on. And then, uh, then you talk about the foam and everything, that's all coming from there. But there's also 100 years of abuse by citizens all the way up the river, yeah, because when I was saying about there's no oxygen underneath, go out there at low tide and stick a shovel in, take out a scoop and smell it. It's already there. The hydrogen sulfide's in the, in the sediments now underneath. That's because we dumped all our sawing and our, and our logs and everything else in there. There's also, I don't know how many, I think it was tens of, I don't know if it was 100, tanneries up that river?
Yes.
That they dumped thousands and thousands, gallons, six times, they have to go and tan those tides, the hides, and they dumped thousands of gallons into the river, filled with bark from, from tamaracks because that's what they use for doing the tanning. So, they got all that in there. Plus, you got cumulative effects of those 125 miles of river that are coming down through here. So, there's all that stuff that you have to prove. I mean, I think you would probably put through about 20 or 30 master students and probably a few PhD students just working on this river, and probably 100 years of study. By the, well, the raw sewage, that's another thing, in this community, down in the Cove, used to back up the trucks and dump raw sewage in the thing. We did that for years before we had our sewage and treatment plant. So, all those things are all added to it, so, so difficult to do it. I mean, even though I agree with you 100%, I said, geez, I mean, when I seen the comment of them accidentally dumping, I don't know how many thousands, was it a million gallons? And then the mill manager saying, "Well, there's nothing wrong here now." Yeah, it's because it's already gone down the stream. And then when you would point out there, that red dot down there, there's also a aquaculture.
Yes.
And then see, on the other side of the Oak Bay, I had to deal with a lot of people because they were complaining that the aquaculture facility was, was producing the foam and the discoloration. And then, so there's not affecting their fish up there, so I don't, you know, like, I don't, they take samples all the time too. They take samples daily, they have to. And it's hard for them to disassociate the pollution coming out of the end of the St. Croix River with what they're producing. Because they don't know, when the tides go in, that goes, pushes it all the way up to Oak Bay. And they're releasing from Oak Haven. So, there's so many difficulties that you'd have to do. But, I mean, to put the, put the awareness on, I think right now, we have to put the awareness on, like you say. At least have somebody say, "Yeah, we," you know, like, then you got Army Corps of Engineers, you got our environmental thing, and you, oh, you'd be a big, and then we got a, and then we got another guy, yeah, Greenpeace guy, Paul Watson.
Paul Watson, put him on.
And then we'll, and then, you know, and then next week, we have a new president coming in, so.
Paul C. Shepard.
So, I just want to point out the difficulty, even though I think it's a great thing, but, I mean, there's a lot of stuff there, right?
Well, we can write a letter.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is the procedure. Since you're sitting as committee, you can't actually make a decision to, to make a policy decision. To this committee, you can't actually make a decision to make a policy decision, but I can take direction to draft a resolution for your consideration at your council meeting at the end of the month, if that's the wish of committee.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
That would be something.
Okay. I'll draft something up for you to take a look at.
Thank you for listening.
Well, we are all laid up tomorrow.
Mine is set up for 21 years, and one of them will...
All right. Oh, and on that note, that's the end of our open. Okay. Is there... Okay, that's enough on that topic. It's starting to stink. All right. I need a mover and seconder. Pursuant to Section 68, Bracket 1 of the Local Government's Act, council moved to close session for the purpose of discussing, one, negotiation of an agreement, two, negotiation of another agreement, and three, personal matter.
I'll second.
Counselor Eastman, Counselor Harding, sorry, Brian. Any questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We are now moving into closed.